Timeline is so that you know what our standard.
I think we, we did receive that at one time and, but it's always good to be refreshed. Because it's a moving target, right? Kind of. Any, yes.
What kind of response have you gotten from the citizens? When you had those open houses?
So, actually, the responses we've gotten from the, from the community have been very positive. It's more a how fast can you build it? We do put out a outreach summary that kind of encompasses all the comments that, that we've gotten from the public open houses as well as our online version as well.
Yes.
Question, I think before we saw a schedule that was put out in a chart form showing from beginning to the end of the project and has any of those dates changed at all?
At this point, we're still working with our consultant. So, right now, we're looking at finishing our environmental process later this summer and we're looking at a.
And we're getting, we're getting concerns from some of the people that use the parking structure that exist already that if there's any way we can pull it back and, you know, get it performed similarly.
Yeah.
I'm sure everybody has the same desire.
So, we're, we're still on target to complete the project by 2023 and so we are going to look for opportunities to see if we can up the schedule. Right now, as Jason said, we're really confined to the federal process of the environmental phase. And so until we complete the environmental completion, then we'll, we'll know more as we enter the, what we call the next final design or phase of the project and then enter.
I know it's a little early in the project, but, you know, just plant the seed.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Of, of the 533, is that correct? Five thirty-three stalls?
So, approximately five thirty-five for commuters.
Is it all sound transit ownership? The stalls?
In terms of?
For the commuter stalls?
Yeah, commuters.
Yeah, it's all commuter.
Correct.
Any other, any other questions from council? Yes.
I just wanted to ask, on the environmental, are you foreseeing any problems?
At, at this point, we're, we're still during the evaluation. We don't anticipate any environmental review, but the, because this is a federalized project, we will have to consult and get approval from the Federal Transit Administration and also from the Washington State Department of Archaeological and Historic Preservation Office. And so, there's just a lot of review time that's included in their time. They require a minimum, the FDA requires a minimum of 30 days review and the DAP, the Department of Archaeological and Historic Preservation, takes another 30 days.
So, once you get all that, then the project has a go and you can start?
Yes, so the, the next step, after we complete the environmental phase, we will return to, to the Auburn City Council to present the conclusions of the studies and then seek the recommendation to then go to our Transit Board, then they will select the project.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
For your presentation. Next, we will have Director Coleman, new revenue options.
Good evening. Good evening. Okay, good evening, Shelley Coleman, Finance Director for the city. When we put the 2019, 2020 budget together, we had to do some things that we hadn't had to do in the past to ensure that we could continue our programs and services for the city. And so tonight, I want to talk a little bit about the 2019, 2020 budget, general fund, budget preparation, talk about the six-year forecast. We talked about that also at a council retreat last March, and the revenue trends, the expenditure trends and fund balance and what is happening with fund balance. I want to go over the current revenues that the city has that may be increased with council actions, also current revenues that the city has but would require a vote of the people for any increases, and also discuss some new revenue options that may be enacted either through a vote of the people or merely council action. And with that, we'll talk about a levy lift primer. This will be a, we've seen this before, I have some nice graphs from MRSC that show the levy lift and how those work, and a BNO tax primer. If you recall, the actions to balance the 2019, 2020 general fund budget, we had to retain sales tax dollars in the general fund. Funds that were normally used for the city local street program, those were retained in the general fund, about three and a half million dollars anticipated over the two years over the biennium. And the city street program is being funded with real estate excise tax dollars. We also had to put contra expenditure accounts where you, were put in and utilized to balance the budget. These dollars were actually a reduction of the expenditure budget in the two years and these are dollars to recognize DAP attrition. We budget for positions as though they're full for the entire year and this takes into account that attrition where they're not full for the entire year. And we also in 2020 put in, the city put in a, from the reserve fund, which is known as our cumulative reserve fund, a transfer of $4 million to assist in balancing the budget. These are the dollars and what I'd like to point out, revenues here, there's the $4 million transfer right here and from the cumulative reserve fund, which brings the revenue in 2020 up to $75,250,000. If we were to remove that $4 million, note that the revenue in 2020 is less than the revenue in 2019. And we'll get into some of the reasons why. And this is what it looks like on a graph. And revenues grow, are anticipated to grow through 2024 to about $75 million. And our expenditures, I wanted to point out two things on this particular chart. I know it's a lot of numbers, but right here, this is the contra expenditure accounts where we've reduced revenue by one and a half million and two million in 2019 and 2020. And down here on this line, residual unused budget, you can see this is an average of what's generally, where these are expenditures that are budgeted that aren't made in the, in the year as well as maybe revenues that come in over what was anticipated. So, we've taken into account in this that there will be budget, unused budget at the end of the year and maybe some revenues that come in over what we had anticipated. And we've incorporated that into this analysis. And you can see even with that, we come up to about $30,600,000 negative at the end of 2024 forecast. And this is just the, here's the graph that has both the revenues in green, the expenditures in blue, and you can see that they are growing faster than the revenues are. We've, as you know, we have a lot, we're, we have taken out streamlined sales tax mitigation, which was about $2 million a year. There has been some Marketplace Fairness Act revenue and the best we can see, the Marketplace Fairness Act, the increase is about $70,000 a year. So, we're not gaining a lot. Or I should say $70,000 a quarter, so it's $240,000 that we anticipate to receive annually or in 2018 and on into 2019, which should see some growth. The red dots are fund balance and you can see that goes negative by 2024. Other things that are going on, we have union contracts that we're negotiating right now, some we've settled, council approved one last night. I will say, we have planned over this biennium, we put 3% in for salaries and wages, they're coming in higher than that. So, that's something to keep in mind. We'll have to maybe come back when the contracts are all settled and maybe revisit the six-year forecast and the budget. So, the current revenues with increased capacity that don't require a vote of the people are these revenues. So, the internal water utilities, water utility tax, sewer utility, storm, garbage utility tax, these are utilities that are owned by the city and there is no cap, no statutory cap on what can be levied. Right now, it's 7% on these four city-owned utilities, 1% goes to the arterial street preservation fund and 6% goes to the general fund. There's a card room tax currently at 4%. The cap, the legal statutory cap is 12%. The city collects around $200,000 a year on this tax. Business licenses, the rate was increased on January 1st of this year, however, the licenses for 2019 were sent out prior to January 1st, 2019. So, we won't see that, that revenue, it's about $200,000 a year. And I'm going to have a slide that shows how much each one of these percentages or increases would be. Park and rec fees, and this includes the fees as well as lease rentals or facility rentals, we get about three and a half, 3.3 million dollars in revenue. Permit fees, the, the cap is the cost. We can charge fees to recoup the city's cost and the study that was done last year by FCS group showed that we were right there, about 98, 99% of recouping the fees for permitting what the city does. And the planning and development fees, that's a little more intricate and council did increase some of the fees where there was some substantial cost to the city and where the city was recouping just a small percentage of those costs, so council did.
Yes, John.
Shelley, impact fees, which column do those fit under?
Impact fees are, this is general fund operating. Impact fees are a capital fee, like road, street impact fees or park impact fees. Those would go into, we have an impact fee fund and the, those go into that fund and they are budgeted out as street projects, arterial street projects are planned and park projects. And so those funds sitting there will be transferred out for those capital projects. These could be used for capital projects, but these are primarily, I'm looking at operating type revenues here.
I have a question on the park and rec fee. Does the 3.3 million dollars cover all of our expenditures?
No, no. About 20, 25% I think.
25%.
23% maybe?
25%.
23%, 25, somewhere.
23.
And this is where, the slide where I told you I'd show you what each percent of these taxes that are under council authority or fees, that each 1% what it generates.
Yolanda.
So, Shelley, on that, go back to the last page you just went. So, you have 6%. Is that, that, is that as high as we could go?
No, there is no cap on those.
Oh, okay, no, I saw that, okay, thank you. So, does that mean that we could raise them up a little bit more?
Good, council could do that. And here's what each percent in the city-owned utilities would generate approximately. If there's any question on this, I do have permit fees in there and as, as I stated previously for the study that we did, or FCS group did for the city last year, we are recouping our costs with our existing permit fee structure. Revenue capacity, the city currently, or revenues that the city currently has in place, increases would require a vote of the people, 50 plus one, 50% plus one vote. And you can see that a property tax levy led left, 1% would generate 220. One biggest increase would be electric tax, get about 3.6 million or 3.3 million, somewhere, somewhere in there into the general fund. 1% of this tax goes into the arterial street fund. Natural gas tax, 1% under 200 and the telephone tax. And again, this telephone tax revenue stream is in substantial decline. We're seeing significant declines year to year and that will continue, I'm sure. Okay, new revenue options. These are revenues the city currently does not collect and whether the, a vote of the people is required or they can be levied with council action. There's the public safety, public safety sales tax. The city can levy a 0.1% on sales tax for public safety and auto sales are exempt from this and that's a 50% plus one. I've asked MRSC if they could provide a list of the cities who have been successful with this measure on a ballot. There's a business and occupation tax. This is council authority. There's various types of ways to use or generate revenue off of the business and occupation tax and it's 500 million, uh, 5, 5 million plus per year. Levy led left, a one-year and multiple-year options, a 1% left again is about 220,000. I would like to add though, with a levy led left, that first year, whether it be a one-year left or a six-year left, the first year is always a fixed dollar amount and then if it's a multi-year left, then it increases by some index or some stated percentage. And an excess levy, that would be for capital use only, that's if the city wanted to go out on a bond.
Question.
Shelley, on the BNO tax?
Yes.
Did you calculate a, a range of percentage on that or is it just kind of estimating what it might look like if we imposed it?
I'm estimating, I've got a little bit more in here on that. I have not, I have quite a bit of data on it, but I wanted to wait and see if council was interested. I kind of have some parameters in here.
That's right, good.
Later on in the slide presentation.
Bob, question.
Thank you. I know we've looked at this before, but Shelley, have we made any progress with the warehouses?
No.
Nothing at all?
In which, in which way, progress?
Well, getting additional revenues from, from the warehousing.
No, the city gets property tax from property that warehouses sit on and the, the structure itself. If there's any retail activity out of there, the city may get some revenue off of that.
Do some of the other cities around us that have warehouses do with this, are they in the same dilemma that we are where?
Well, Kent, for example, they have passed a BNO tax and a portion, or part of that legislation is a square footage tax on warehousing or, and they have a square footage tax on retail warehousing, office, those types of things, so. But it's injunction with also a BNO tax, so if, if there's square footage tack, or tax remittance would be higher than a BNO tax on their activities, then they would pay via the square footage.
I know when we were doing our roads, streets kind of thing, we actually had considered the possibility of doing that to the warehousing.
This would be what, this would be the vehicle to do that with.
I see, very good, thank you.
We can't, we have to, the city has to look at ways that we are statutorily authorized to collect revenues or levy taxes and the way to do that would be through a business and occupation tax.
That would be a council vote or?
That would be a council vote. Briefly, on the two types of levy led lifts, the voted, it's, it's, gets a little complex because we've got a couple of different kinds. We talked about this, I think, a few months ago. There's a single year left and that can be permanent or temporary and there's a multi-year left that can be permanent or temporary also. And I do have those nice graphs from MRSC that shows what a one-year levy would look like that is temporary. And the initial left, which is this dark blue, is a dollar amount and then this increase every year is the 1% that's allowed. And then at the end, if it's a temporary and not permanent, if it's permanent, it would keep climbing like that, whoops. It would keep climbing like this, if it's permanent. If it's temporary, it'll go back down to what it would have been had there been no levy led left. And then the multi-year left, again, the first year is a fixed dollar amount and then the subsequent years are by a fixed percentage generally tied to an index or not. The levy may either be permanent or temporary, let's look at the permanent one first, this is what the permanent lift would look like. And so you, we would lift and then whatever the index was for six years, because you can lift, if we wanted to increase over this first year, right here, over 2%, say it's 2% or 3% over the, then it goes on up and then that levy is retained and then you're back down to the 1% a year after the six years. A temporary six-year, this is showing five years left, would go back, this is only for five years, one, two, three, four, five, and then it goes, because you can do it up to six years and they're demonstrating, this says six years, but this is five years. You can increase and then it goes back down to what the levy assessment would have been had no levy led left taken. Forty-four cities levy BNO tax. We must use a model ordinance that came into being around 2009 or 2010. It has to do with a term called apportionment because if the business is located in Taquilla but they do business in various cities, then Taquilla can't collect all their revenue. You have to apportion out where they're doing business and they pay the BNO tax based upon the business activity that they do in each city or around the area, if the other cities have a BNO tax. So, it's, it's a pretty long ordinance, I think it's 50 some pages. Taxes are capped up to 0.2%. The common tax categories are retail, manufacturing, services, wholesaling and you can vary, the city could vary the rate among the categories, but must be applied uniformly within the category. I don't have any pictures here for you. And so, cities are, we're not restricted on collecting this tax on any other basis, are not restricted and we can collect, the city could do a tax on any other basis such as square footage, head tax, what they call a full-time employee equivalent, graduated annual license tax, like a different license fee or tax per activity, retail, warehousing, wholesaling. Lead time to implement a business and occupation tax, depending on the complexity of the structure, nine to 12 months. If it's something straightforward like a license fee, increase a license fee tax based upon the type of business or a head tax, square footage, that would not be as complex. If it's something, a BNO tax on their activities such as wholesaling, retailing, manufacturing, services, that's going to be much more complex.
Question. Under the subject of head tax, is it possible to do just the opposite? Can we incentivize employment? So, in other words, if you have, you know, extremely automated warehouse, you might find your BNO tax rate at one level. If you have human activity taking place in there, maybe reduce that BNO tax rate?
Well, it has to be applied consistently.
Sure.
And if warehousing businesses have a head tax per employee, they have to do it per employee. Now, if they're extremely automated, then they wouldn't have as many employees.
Right.
Does that help?
So, yes, but what I'm wanting to do is both raise revenue, but incentivize employment as opposed to automation. So, I'm just curious. Well, we want to raise the revenue, there's, I mean.
We want to raise the revenue.
No doubt. But we, I don't think we want to disincentivize employment.
And that's kind of, that's what a head tax would do, disincentivize employment.
I was wondering if we could instead of having a head tax, have a tax credit, you know, tax credit for employees hired.
I, I don't, I would need to look into that, that's, that's a more, I have not seen that.
Complex.
And I can't, I can't, I'm thinking probably not, but I don't want to say no because there may be something out there. Because again, we're not held to any particular measurement or how we do it, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of different exceptions or different ways that cities have done their BNO tax that kind of tweaks this model ordinance and does something a little bit different. It's, there's about 10 cities out there that have done that, like Kent has the square footage. A square footage tax would take that whole employment incentive or not and park it, it would not, right.
Question from Claude.
Shelley, 44 of the 281 cities.
Yeah.
Imposing a BNO tax.
There's 44 cities that oppose it.
Oh, you do have the list of cities?
Yeah.
That was my question, so, yeah.
Just keep going, they're all, they're at the end of year.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, they're there. So, done some very rough estimates. We were able to get the square footage of, and this is, oh.
So, I'm looking at your, oh, I'm ahead of you, I'll wait.
I don't know if she was finished answering her, his question.
I was.
I was looking for the, looking for the list of cities.
Okay, and I missed you.
Yes, the maximum capacity you said for BNO, maximum capacity would be 5 million. When I look at, no?
Five plus.
Five what?
Five plus million.
Yes, okay.
It depends on what the city does. If the city does square footage and BNO. It depends on what the city does, if the city does square footage and B and O. I'm, the B and O tax on gross receipts, and there is no source of really pure data or great data out there. And our real, I think it came out to be about, around 6 million. If we did the full 0.2%. Again, this is based off of data that we received, some data we received from Department of Revenue, as well as some of going through our own tax reports and applying some very general high-level guidelines.
So when I look at this, the 44 cities, they range from as little as 20,000 a year up to Renton. I didn't see Seattle, so I didn't, Seattle I can't relate to. But when I look at Renton, I see that Renton is like 500,000.
Well, those are the thresholds, that's not what they're collecting. That's the threshold, if a business is 500,000 or greater in their gross receipts or activities, then they'd be subject to the tax. If they're underneath that, they would not be.
Okay, got it.
Go on then.
I know that Shelley, when you came to our ad hoc committee that Mr. Corsey and Mr. Baggett and I were at and we were discussing the B and O tax, tax, you told us the square footage that we had available here in our city. And when you told, told us, gave us a rough idea how much we would collect, I, that sounded really good for me, you know, for our city.
Let's hear on this slide, and there's the estimated revenue from the 0.2% of 6.6 million. Bullet there, and then there's about 22 million square feet of warehousing. And manufacturing and retail. We got this from Economic Development, they ran some reports and we have a list of everything. And now some of these places may be exempt because they may be nonprofit. So we took a reduction, just kind of applied, took a 25% reduction in square footage and applying them. But we're figuring that's about what we receive.
So, our retail businesses, we collect sales tax. From our warehouses, we don't collect sales tax if they ship the stuff off someplace else. So if we were to do a B and O tax and set it up so only the warehouses where we're not collecting sales tax were B and Oed, we would collect 2.5 million a year?
If we did about 10 cents per square foot.
Okay.
And maybe there's a square footage tax on manufacturing and warehousing, and it could be a different rate per category. And maybe retail doesn't have a square footage tax, you know. There's things to think about and how you do that, given having a mall in the city essentially, you know, how you know how to do that. So those are things to take into consideration. So maybe you want to do for retail, B and O tax or not, I mean, revenue on gross, gross receipts.
Mayor has a question.
Well, not a question, more of a, more of a comment. When, when you look at these gross dollar amounts, just remember that, yes, you could collect those, but you have to, you have to take into consideration, what does that do to the businesses in our city? And will it, will our city be a desirable place for them to continue doing business? So you have to find that sweet spot as to what, will the market bear, if you will? And I've already mentioned this to the Chamber Executive Board. And we will be having discussions with council and the executive board. Because anything that is going to go as a tax perhaps against businesses, we really need to have that business community involved from the ground level because it will definitely require their support if council decides to go for a type of revenue generation that includes the businesses.
Margot.
I'm glad you brought that up, Mayor, because the chambers contacted me about this issue. And so they are, are highly interested in what we're going to do here, especially in light of us spending a number of years promoting Auburn based on it not having a B and O tax. So it's a pretty significant issue.
I should have couched this in the very beginning. The delta that we have between revenues and expenditures and the rate we're going, we're, we're prob, we're looking for 5, 6 million dollars a year in revenue. If we're going to continue doing what we're doing.
Margot.
And what I did while I was supposed to be listening is, you know, we're, we're looking for a significant amount of money. I took the, the first utility, one sewer and water and, and with the 1% increase, what we could generate. And with those, came up with something like, on that first page, just 670,000 or something. And 670,000 is, is not going to solve our problem. And in, when we start looking at water, we read a lot about water in our letters to the editor. Water seems to be a big issue. So that's another hotspot, I think, along with the B and O tax that we want to be cued into. On the page, is that, yeah, page 10, I took those and added them up and that came to 671,000. That's not a lot of money for all of that. And since I'm talking, and gambling, we always seem to be rolling back for certain businesses and things on gambling. So I don't know if that's a place that we, we really want to look either. And parks and recreation, in this, in this community where we have such a high free and reduced lunch rate, and we really want to encourage our citizens and our kids to be involved, you know, raising the financial bar that they have to meet in order to participate, we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot possibly.
Talking about parks and rec again, what do, what's the percentage, ours is 23%.
About that, yeah.
What about the other cities around us?
I don't have that data.
Can we get some of that data?
Yeah, yeah, it'll take a little time to.
Next time we talk about this.
Yeah.
It'd be kind of interesting to see where other cities sit. Where we're only, we're only coming up with 23% of the expenditure. Bob, sorry.
This is maybe a little off topic, but I know that the new tax laws have a lot of effects, pluses and minuses to a lot of the rules. Do any of these new tax laws have any effect, either direct or indirect, on our city at all?
The new, new tax laws in regards to?
Federal, the federal tax?
All the, the federal tax, the, you're talking about businesses and having the reduction? Not that I know of, I.
Margot.
I'd like, on page six, where we track the residual unused budget, I would like to see some historical data on, on that. Because maybe the 4.5 million for 2021, 22, 23, and 24 is a little flatlined. Though I do want you to know that I incredibly appreciate how conservative you are. And that's why we're not in trouble right now.
Well, this is a little bit less than the average. The average might be around 5 million. But what I'd like to caveat in this forecast, we have estimated salaries at 3% in 19 and 20, and 2% 21 through 24.
Okay, so it's probably not worth going in.
We want to be, we don't want to push that number too much. And it, it's gone up and down, but it's gone from four to five, a little bit, to be honest, you know. I have looked at it.
Okay.
So this is a little bit less than the average, but not a lot.
Thank you.
And there isn't a unused budget here in 2019 because we've already have a contra expenditure in here, 3.5 million. So I don't want to double count the savings there.
Thank you.
John.
Inflation costs all of us, as individuals and as a city. The cost of us running a city goes up every year. Not because we are being anything less than frugal, it's just the cost of wages and things that we buy to use to run the city go up, just like our own family budgets. The true problem comes, from my point of view, is that the toolbox of remedies the state constitution gives us are limited, to the most part, regressive. In other words, the less you make, the more the tax hurts. I don't have an answer. I just wanted to state that we're kind of hamstrung by the tools that we have to use. It's obvious when you look at a five, six-year projection, we're going to go into the red in two years. So what are we going to do about it? And, you know, I'm kind of an old budgeteer and there's only two ways to go about it. Raise revenue or cut expenses or some combination thereof.
Margot.
On page 10 and 11, can I look at 1% increase generates 100,000 a year and sewer 273. On the next page, electric, 1% generates 700. Why is it so much out of proportion to the rest of them?
I'm, this is based upon what we actually receive. And it has to do with the gross revenues of the utility. And the electric utility generates far more revenue than the other utilities. Another, I wanted to mention another thing that is playing on this. It's not just the loss of our mitigation money, it's property tax is a big deal here. With the city's levied all the property tax capacity or bank capacity that it's had, did that last a couple of years ago. And that was to help offset the loss of the annexation sales tax credit, which sunsetted this year, or last year, actually, we're in 2019 now. And we're limited to 1% growth in that year over year. And our salaries and benefits are increasing far more than that. It's 30% of our revenue, general fund revenue.
Shelley, I would really like to see what the other cities that are charging the B and O taxes to their warehousing, how they're doing. Because I know that we, we want to keep our business and be business friendly, but like, we're looking at the resources that you've given us here to see where we could raise and how much we could make. I, I would really be interested to see what the other cities are doing.
Well, this is what they're doing here. The wholesale would probably be warehousing, well, even if they're wholesaling, they, they may not fall into this, any of these. They're not retailing out. We do get retail sales tax on items that come out of the warehouses that stay here in Auburn. Wholesaling is a different type of activity. So warehousing as a, as an activity, like manufacturing, retailing, services, wholesaling, I don't know of any cities that levy B and O tax on warehousing, other than a square footage tax.
Margot.
You know, philosophically, in the last six years that I've been on the council, seven, whatever, we have, and I'm saying this so that you can correct me, but we've been trying to move away from warehousing jobs to manufacturing and service because they use more employees and they have higher wages. But you still have to have the delicate balance of having some warehouses. I would be interested in hearing from maybe Doug Lean or yourself, how much that mix has changed over the years. And philosophically, if we want to be moving away from warehousing to manufacturing and, and retail, because I think that if we did the B and O on warehousing, that would possibly move that along, but maybe we don't want to move it along. So how do we get that kind of information? Or does the rest of the council see that as having any merit in the discussion?
Well, my comment to that would be, it always has merit. Ideas flow into other ideas, so no, it, to me, has merit.
I see, see what they have in the way of breakdown, this, this data is considered, the warehousing and manufacturing is considered industrial.
Yeah.
And there's about 25 million square feet of industrial here in the city. The balance up to 30 million square feet is office and services and retail. So depending on how far, how fine they can comb that data off of their reports and how far back that goes, that would be, I, I don't know if they provided us the data. So I don't know how far back they can go, I imagine they can go back a ways, but.
Just a second, and, and I, I think we also must be cognizant of the fact of what the mayor outlined for us, you know, the chamber involvement and, and this is a very sensitive area. And we have to walk forward cautiously, in my opinion.
The other thing is, you know, I, the mayor started this initiative with the community college and the public education K-12 for jobs and high-wage jobs. And we want to make sure that we're not creating a disincentive for the maintenance and the future development of, of those kinds of jobs. And we could inadvertently do that.
Larry.
Yeah, and I, I think along with the business participation in, in this discussion, I think we also, you know, because in lieu of, of revenue, there will be a requirement to cut services if we don't do that. And it may end up being a combination of both that we do. But I think, you know, that would require a lot of citizen participation too. I mean, what, what do citizens, do citizens want to have fewer parks? Or other services that they would be willing to forego in lieu of revenue? And so I think it has to be a community-wide discussion.
Question, Clutt.
Just a comment, basically, you know, our state legislatures are aware of what the cities are going through. Streamline sales tax mitigation, we've talked to them about that. Cities have been, you know, on their doorsteps constantly related to those types of issues. I'm not quite sure what kind of appetite we have in the state legislature to make changes. Like John's point, we're limited to what we can do. So when we go to Olympia and we talk to them, they know what's happening. AWC has put their information forward on it as well. But, you know, we, we are kind of up against a stumbling block there. There's already been 1,500 bills or so that have been introduced into the legislature already. And, you know, how many of those are actually going to survive committee and get up for a vote and what they mean? There are a few in there for cities, but nothing that I saw that's any significance in relation to the dilemmas that we're in. So I, I think again, once again, it's how we put the pressure on the state legislature to really show them where we're at and what the impact of this is. You know, and John put it perfectly, we raise expenses or cut expenditures or a combination of both, and that's where all of our cities are going to be. of our cities are going to be up against here in the next couple of years, and we're going to be up against this in the next two years. So we have a short time to go through this process. And also, you know, some of these items that Shelley's talking about were brought forward to our road projects ad hoc committee, which is another area we have to look at for revenue generation as we go forward in that process as well. So we have another step to go after we get through this step, but general fund is always the priority first. But I, I'm a little skeptical on how we can convince our state legislatures that this is turning into a crisis rather than just a dilemma.
Largo, and then, and then please, after Largo, please continue with your presentation.
I think that, my best guess is we're not going to get a lot of help out of the legislature because the legislature's going to be focusing on what's going to happen to the public schools in 2020. Everett, Tacoma, a lot of our major districts that gave these huge pay increases to make everything equitable and so forth. Now we're going to be in a huge dilemma where they have 20 and 30 million dollars worth of cuts, and they're going to be right back where they were before. That was one item. The second item is, I love what you said. We start with the general fund. I think we need to create this picture. We really need to create the picture of our roads. And I'm going to harp again on the concept that we need to look at our police station and our police officers and a courtroom. So we, we've got to look at this, this whole picture so that when we present it to the, the voters, they're not nickled and dimed each year. So I appreciate you bringing that up, Claude.
Okay, if you could.
Yeah, I'm about done. I've touched on what other cities are doing. The, the budget, we need to have something in place before you get into your next biennial budget, which will be a little over a year from now, we'll start budgeting. So time is of the essence if we're going to continue performing the services and programs that we currently do. Also, I want to reiterate that property tax, our cap on property tax is also hobbling us in our ability to meet the growing salaries in this region. And the contracts coming, coming in are not at what we've seen in the past. And, you know, what's going to happen here, I can't tell because I don't have my crystal ball for what's going to happen with our contract negotiations. But, and medical's a big deal. Our medical's increasing. So time is of the essence for the next budget cycle. I encourage you to think about these, and if there's something you want me to bring back to look at in more detail, timelines, please let me know.
Okay.
I'd like to know how to move forward here.
Okay, two more questions, then we're going to move on.
Yeah, one final thing. I just kind of want to make sure everybody's aware, if we, if we go to the public for a vote on any of these issues, we need to start preparing now. Because it takes quite a while in order to put a package together. And we've also, in the past, seen the shortfalls when we hurried things up at the 11th hour and you saw the results. They didn't pass. So we need to get our, do our homework and do it up front and make sure we're in good posture to make sure that everybody in the public is informed with whatever information we can provide to make them aware of that, just like Claude and several of the other people on the DAs here have stated. You know, you can have it one way or you can have it the other, but we need this balance. And they need to understand what the pitfalls will be if we don't. So.
Largo.
Get off my soapbox.
I'm on the same soapbox, so that we've kind of now got this dark picture. Can you bring us some dark picture on roads and then a dark picture or some ideas on jails and courtroom, not jails, but courtrooms and?
I, I, what are you looking for in the way of courtrooms?
I don't, I, I don't know, but we need to get an ad hoc or a subcommittee, or maybe the mayor's got it all pulled together based on staff input, but, and maybe we, we don't need another, a police station with courtrooms.
Okay. Let's separate operating and capital. There's two, there, those are capital needs that you're addressing. These were operations.
Yes.
So you want to separate the capital needs from the operating facilities.
Yeah. Yeah.
Could we also hear from? No more, no more questions, we're going to move on.
Could we, could just, could we also hear from Doug Lean to give us an update on the warehousing and everything?
You can pull that together. I don't know that Doug needs to, I mean, we've. What kind of information are you looking for?
Well, like, he's already shared with me that we no longer have any space available for warehousing. And our ware, warehousing is all taken.
It's leased up.
Leased up, exactly. And we've had several businesses wanting to come into our area, but we don't have the space. So I would just like to hear if he would approve a BNO tax for the square footage, because we have a lot of square footage.
So I, I will tell you that.
Okay.
That our staff is not going to recommend to you a BNO tax or no BNO tax. That's what council is.
Right, I understand.
Is tasked with doing. So Doug is not going to come down here and tell you, you should have a BNO tax or a square footage tax.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, one last question, then we got to move on. Anybody? Okay. So that's.
I think Shelley has a question.
I want to know what I'm bringing back here, if anything. You talked about capital needs, which is different than the operating needs that we've been talking about. So you want to hear, so that would be Ingrid bringing her street projections.
Yes.
For it again. We can give an update. We're just starting to do the facility study.
Good.
Ingrid's heading that up, and I, I don't know how much information we haven't, we're just getting into it now.
Okay, great.
And kind of give you maybe a timeline on that. Operationally, is there anything you want to see before we, in 12 to 14 months when we start doing budget prep?
I think we're looking at the dark side of the force.
I would still like a, I would still like a little bit more information on if we were to do a BNO on warehouse. You know, what that might look like. I.
On square footage BNO?
On whatever you think.
Square footage.
Yeah. I, I like easy things, okay? And.
It, it would be $250,000 a year per penny. I had a typo in there, I said 225, but it's 250,000 per penny. 10 cents would be 2.5 million. About 20 cents would be about 5 million.
That's on every square footage.
That's on, I've done a little bit of a discount, and that includes.
And that's just warehouses?
That's not just warehousing. Warehousing, it would be about 200,000 for a penny, 2 million for 10 cents. 4 million for 20 cents.
Okay, got it.
Those are rough numbers up there. So I can bring forward something.
I think that maybe when, when you reshare, when we, we come back to revisit this, because I think when we have to look at the total taxing and where we're going to go, we're going to revisit this and facilities and, and roads so that we can see what we're laying on, on the public. If you could add that little, just with warehouses on the BNO page, that would be very helpful for me.
So on the 28th, is it, of next month, February, we have a finance study session next month, towards the end of the month.
Okay.
A finance special focus area.
Yeah.
We can bring this presentation back with, with that. Looking for some direction.
Yeah, I think that's what we need.
Shelley, you've been bantering back and forth here. Could you summarize what you've heard from the council that they would like to see further information on?
I, I heard that Councilmember Wales would like to see what our capital needs are and what we're doing about those in regards to our public safety facilities, as well as our street facilities and our court. We're also looking at our M&amp;O facilities. We're not just looking at those, so where we're at with that facility study. We're going to be talking next week about the TB, at the TVD, we're just talking about some things. Also, we're going to bring this presentation back, and I'm going to conclude with a BNO tax on warehousing would generate, I'm going to have a slide on that.
Yeah.
Is there anything else?
That cover?
That covers what I was asking, yeah.
Great.
Any more, Claude?
I was just wondering, Shelley's asked us for some direction. I'm not sure all seven of us can just go ahead and say, here's a direction. Should we look at a short-term ad hoc committee for revenue generation for general fund to get some, working with Shelley a little bit deeper on this, and then bring recommendations back to the full council?
I don't, I think this is a full council discussion with no, with no.
It's okay, I'm just.
Disrespect. I don't think this is something that you want to have three people talking about and then coming back with, with a few recommendations. This is for all of you, and if it takes longer than it says on the agenda, you know, this is, this is one of the areas that you as council members are going to have probably the greatest impact of your council careers. This is huge. And so providing Shelley with as much information as you can possibly give her, if you have questions on certain things, or if you're leaning in one direction over another, that's what Shelley needs. Shelley can't read your minds, and Shelley is not going to be the one to recommend that this is what council goes forward with. Shelley will provide you with the information because she's very good at that, but she is not going to tell you what you have to do or what you should do. She'll answer your questions. You know, it, it's, when you talk about maybe cutting services or programs, that means cutting people. Whenever you talk about cutting programs, that is cutting people. And I will tell you that I believe we are still leaner, fewer employees than we had prior to the recession. We might be getting close, but we are about 30,000 people more in our city with about the same number of employees that we had before. So we're pretty lean there. So when you talk cutting programs, you're talking people. And if you are talking increasing revenues, you are talking an impact on the residents and on the business owners of this community. So like I said, I'm, I'm not trying to be dramatic here. This is one of the biggest responsibilities your council careers are going to have. And so let's be very mindful, let's give Shelley what you want to hear so she can provide you with the best data that she can.
John, and then Largo.
This is a discussion that needs to be as public as possible. And ad hoc committees, by their nature, are done in a closed room. So best we keep this awkward, but here in front of a camera and an audience.
Largo.
I hearken back to what Bob said, and a little bit of speed is of the essence. And if we have an ad hoc committee, it might get too much into the weeds, and then they have to come and educate the group as a whole that this might be a faster way to do it, bringing us all along at the same time and seeing what each other's issues are. Because I, I do believe that this cannot be like the last transportation levy or bond issue or whatever that we took a number of years ago, where we weren't in the lead and the campaign was only six weeks long. This is going to take some major movement.
And I can't emphasize enough, there's two issues here. There's capital, which, and then there's operations. And if we do a voted something, we can do a voted for operations, probably along a levy lift type of thing on the property tax. There's other, or voted bonds for capital project type things. I think we're a little early on that with our facilities, because we're just really at the beginning of that. But operations.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate what the mayor said about cutting programs. I do think, though, that it's an honest discussion when you look at the outcomes. If we don't do anything, we're going to inevitably be cutting programs. If we raise revenue in one fashion or another, but not enough, we will cut programs. So I, that's my point in discussing it, is that we need to do these things consciously, and the public needs to understand the implications. We need to understand the implications. So I, I appreciate the mayor bringing that up because, you know, it's one thing to say we have to, you know, cut our budget and our family, but when the cable goes off, you know, the kids might not agree with that way of doing it. And so we want to make sure that whatever we do, we have, we're mindful of what the public is going to say about it, and when we raise revenue, the impact that that will have on our businesses. I, I'm always looking for ways to try to create jobs in our community. That's why I asked about, you know, incentivizing jobs while we are looking for raising revenue so that businesses could potentially mitigate revenue increases by bringing unemployment. I know that won't solve our revenue piece of it as much, but it may overall reduce the pain for some businesses. Anyway, thank you, Larry.
Claude.
I just wanted to say, I greatly appreciate what the mayor, you know, has said and what it means for all of us. And I guess my reason for asking, you know, ad hoc was to really spur the conversation with that, and I, I agree with my colleagues that.
Oh, he just wanted to.
We need to do this all together. But I don't think we can wait for other special focus areas. I think we need to have some work sessions that we can establish on this topic, so we're all here together discussing it in a group work session, maybe two, three, whatever number it is that we need to go through. I think we need to look at that and get that underway.
Okay.
I also appreciate what Nancy, the mayor, said, but I was referring for Doug Lean to come and tell me, or as, as council, what he would suggest for us to vote on. I was just referring to him because he's the one that deals with our warehouses. He knows what our businesses are coming in and, and, you know, businesses that have been wanting to come in, but due to us being full with our, you know, with our businesses, that's all I was just fearing for, for him to come and share with council about where we're at. And, and then with you bringing back on what it would look like if we did go with a BNO tax. So that's what I wanted to clear up. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the council? Any more questions, comments?
Do you want to see this before the end of February again? It's four weeks from now. Do you want to see it before then?
No.
Can we look at, perhaps setting up some work sessions and look at a calendar and see what that means? It may not be before that time, but I think we need to get something on a calendar for a few sessions to, to look at this. And perhaps we can wait until February, but, but as Largo said, you know, we're, we're, and Bob, we're going to move this quick. So I, I think we really need to look as time being at the essence here.
So that's a good segue into the next topic, item B is in boy. Resolution 5403.
Good evening. So for you as a resolution, we'd like to consider to authorize an inter-fund loan to the waterfront from either the storm and/or sewer fund. Back in September 6th of 2016, council had approved Resolution 5249, which did authorize a $5 million resolution for that purpose. That did lapse as of December 31st of 2018. So that's why we're coming back and, and seeking that authorization. There are a number of capital projects that are in the capital facility plan that. There are a number of capital projects that are in the capital facility plan that the waterfront will be undertaking. The amount is significant, so I think in the agenda bill noted 8.2 million. The nice thing about an interfund loan is it gives us a little more certainty in terms of where we are in spending dollars, so we're not putting a bond issue out there and then having to fight over spending down over the IRS approved timelines. The other attractive feature of it too is that instead of paying a bondholder, we're paying ourselves during this time. So we keep the cost down, have the benefit in our own pocket, and truly go out and issue bonds when we need to.
Smart.
No, I don't think that's.
Smart thing to do.
John?
One question. Will this drawdown, this temporary five-year loan, impinge on any foreseen needs of sewer and?
Water.
Storm.
Storm.
No, we, in both of those funds, we have a significant amount, and the projects aren't at a point which they would breach the amount that we have on hand, so. And, and with that, we would just keep our eye on it too. So if we had did a loan to the waterfront, and let's say it was three million, we might consider, if there were needs in the storm or sewer fund for projects, to go ahead and look at maybe a private placement loan at that time, so that, that loan can get repaid, so.
Better than taking it to the public, but still it's going to pay the local government investment rate, so.
Exactly.
Keep it in the family.
It'll be on the agenda next week for, at the council meeting for approval.
Bob?
Just a comment. A lot of the people, a lot of the residents of our city have complained about the water rates, the water price, the prices, and justifiably so, but I think that they are really, most of the ones that I have spoken to actually don't really understand a lot of the costs that go into that bill that they give every, every month or so. And I think that we probably need to do a better job of explaining to these, these good people out there who are paying a lot of these fees, that it's not just the water. It's the infrastructure, it's the cost of, of the capital projects going into these things that are sometimes very aged, and they need to be replaced, especially when we do streets and things like that. The infrastructure is very important, which drives a lot of that cost. So I think that we may want to do a better job of informing the public about that. And those of you out there in TV land that are listening, this is an opportunity for you to understand what really goes into that bill you receive every month. Thank you.
And, and the water is, and I, I probably can't speak to this to the degree that Ingrid could, but we have a lot of regulations from Department of Health, reporting, testing, much more regulation with water, because water is such an important commodity. Think about if you don't have clean water, what that means to your society. So, there are a lot of protections, and we do have an aging infrastructure out there, and we're having to replace a lot of the pipes in the ground, if you will, and also to maintain the pump stations, the wells, and the springs. It's costly.
So, so what's the timing of, of five four zero three?
You mean the, the resolution?
The urgency of all this.
Plus, we're going to bring it next week to have.
Next week?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Council meeting for approval.
So, does the council have a somewhat of a consensus for this resolution? Okay, good, good. Are there any further questions of the council? Okay, well, thank you very much for your input. Thank you, Shelley. Thank you. So now we'll go to SR 18 and SR 164. Item C is in Charlie.
Good evening. So, for the record, Ingrid Gopel is Works Director, and with me is Jeannie Accutanzo, who is a consultant working for the tribe on the project. You may recall, we were back here in June and did a quick update on what the project was. You're getting ready to go out for some additional public meetings, and so we wanted to come back again with another update for the council before those public meetings. Now I'm going to hand it over to Jeannie.
Thanks, Ingrid. Thanks, Ingrid. So, as you may recall, last summer, in July, we had a set of public meetings here and, and, and the tribe, and just went over the basics, introducing the public to the project, and fundamentally introducing them to the purpose and need. And one of the outcomes of those meetings was a resounding agreement, that there is a purpose and need, that agreement on what the problem was. So, the, the next set of public meetings is to really give an update on the projects, and start introducing the community to the concepts, and then discuss evaluation criteria and gather feedback. We've been meeting regularly with the, with a technical advisory committee that includes a number of people from the City of Auburn, your technical experts, Ingrid and her staff, and as well as folks from Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, Wash Dot, our partners, King County Metro, the City of Enamclaw, and, and King County Roads. So, those are some of the feedback that we are getting. And as you might recall, this is coming through Wash Dot's Connecting Washington program, so we are applying what's called Practical Design Process, and that, the steps in that, what are the issues, what are the possible solutions, and, and we are at the point to talk about how well do those options, how do, how do options work to solve the problems. We have this initial set of options, you've got them all in front of you, I can tell, and what can be done to make the options better? That's where we'll go, that's where we're going, and can everyone get behind those options? And then that would be where we would have a recommended, preferred alternative. It's a complicated project. What we presented to the public in July was a little bit of background data on the project need, so state, and this document, this purpose and need statement would also help us support environmental documentation into the future, so it's forward compatible. The statement was, State Route 164 provides primary access to the growing areas of East Auburn, Muckleshoot Indian Reservation, and Enamclaw and recreational areas to the southwest. So, the focus is on improving safety, accommodating growth, and these are projections from PSRC, and then reducing congestion. So, the community was very much in agreement on these statements. So, that led us to work with this technical group and start looking at solutions. So, the first concept is really, what can we do with the existing corridor? How can we make it better? This is the existing corridor, there are a number of signals here, and some of the options would be to improve some of the more congested locations, more congested intersections, so at M Street, or how can we improve the interchange at, the Auburn Way South interchange at SR 18? So that's one. And there are a number of, this gives a little bit of description. We're going to talk about some of the benefits, and then some of the challenges. And we, on this one, I just want to point out, we'll change this slide, there's some, a challenge that says there's a limited benefit for reducing congestion specifically during events. So we probably won't talk about that, because we really don't have the data to back that up. So we're, and as we head into looking at these in more detail, we'll talk more about those, but that, that'll, we'll, we'll take that statement off. So that's the first concept. And maybe best I'll go through these four concepts, talk about the evaluation criteria, and then come back. Does that seem fair? Okay, so they, so, and when we go to the, the public, what we will be asking them is, these, this is a concept, these are the benefits, did we get some of the benefits right? Do you agree with those? Do you think there are other benefits? Do you think there are other challenges? So that's what we'll be asking the community, and, and then what's, what's important to them. And concept two is something that's been around for a long time, and it's the extension of R Street, using that undercrossing.
The existing undercrossing that currently serves the pit area south of SR 18.
It's, right now, it's a gravel road, and it used to be an old railroad spur at R Street. And, and that would come with some extensions, either at 12 Street or 6th Street, and it would connect to 17th Street. So in this way, it provides new, a new north-south connection, plus some connections to M Street, which has a great separation of the BNSF real.
We have a question.
You're supposed to wait till she's gone.
All right, never mind.
Well, I'll come back, yeah, I'll go through them really quickly, and then we'll come back to them. So again, some issues about, about it, some of the benefits, provides a new north-south connection, uses that existing R Street undercrossing, it's consistent with some of the city plans. The city plans have talked about this in the past. It might increase traffic across the BNSF tracks, and the right-of-way is constrained, and it, and it, it has, it wouldn't have an intersection on 164 at R Street.
It would have these connections.
It would use connections at 17th Street. So, that's a little bit about it. And then concept three, we are trying to be forward compatible in looking at a potential access. In the past, people have talked about an access or an interchange on SR 18. And a process that Wash Dot likes to consider is, so you have to look at local street options, but before you consider access options. So this option is, would look at access, either an enhanced access at SR 18, SR 18, some kind of interchange, or connections to Auburn Black Diamond Road, the, which is, is an underutilized, it's not as busy of an interchange. And so, could we connect to SR 18 somehow? And then somehow, some connections across what is MIT area, the Muckshoot tribal area, and then either connecting at a number of locations where there are signals, specifically the Plaza Riverwalk Drive or Dogwood Street. So, not exactly sure where those alternatives are. We know that there are benefits and challenges of those. And then the last option is something also that had been talked about in the past. And this would be to use the existing Auburn Black Diamond Road interchange of SR 18, and use the existing alignment of Green Valley Road with some connections that go up to Steve Hill, either to connect to Academy Drive or Noble, Noble Court. And these, while these seem like specific alignments, we also considered that using the existing Green Valley Road was probably less impactful than a brand-new alignment in what is outside the urban growth area, so rural, rural farmland. So those are the four concepts, and then just quickly, the, we will hold these against these evaluation criteria, which are impacts to the built-in natural environment. We have a lot of impacts to consider, because there's a lot out in the rural area, there's a lot to consider. And then in transportation benefits, we'll be looking at how well does the concept serve traffic through the area? How well does it serve traffic to the area? How does it reduce corridor congestion? And, and would it improve safety? And so those are the basic boards, and I'll stop here, so if you have some questions.
Yes, I, I just wanted, and I saw what you did on, on page 16. Where the river road, what are you folks planning on doing that, on that road? Because it's really dark right now and very narrow. Were you planning on, if you do use these plants, are you widening that area?
On Riverwalk Drive, I think it's on. Yeah, I, I, in any of these options, what, we would look at developing an alternative, and if there are second, what are called cumulative and secondary impacts. For example, if, if we connect to a road and it needs to be, if we connect it to Dogwood and it needs to be widened, we would do that on Riverwalk. If there were other things that we needed to do to improve that intersection, we would do those as, you know, we would do those as well, and would be part of the environmental process.
Because right now, we've been seeing a lot of those trees falling and blocking the road, and it's very narrow. People are walking there in the dark, and, you know, because it's so dark there, almost have an accident out there. So I was just wondering, with all this new development, if that, if you're going to do anything in that area?
So I guess I want to back up a little bit. So these are, these are kind of generalized concepts, these are really high-level concepts. The next steps are really to go to the public and get some input on these general concepts, so that the, the team can then determine which concepts do we take to the next level and go into a lot more detail. So, to answer your question, don't know whether it's going to go all the way down Riverwalk, or how far down Riverwalk to go to make that connection. It depends upon what that traffic modeling that would be done in that next level would actually show for what the impacts are to Riverwalk, if a connection was made at Riverwalk, if that was.
That answers my question.
So, so, this isn't a full evaluation of any of these, it's very, very high-level, very general.
Okay, thank you.
Largo?
I like concept four. I like concept four, because it takes the congestion point away from 18 and 164, where that deals with a lot of inner Auburn traffic, and gives us a second point further down to deal with more of the, I guess would be the east end of Auburn, Muckleshoot, into an area where I don't see a lot of people getting off and on the freeway. Where any day of the week, you can go down to where 164 comes into Highway 18, that intersection, and from about 3 o'clock on, it's, it's, it's totally backed up, whether there is a event in Enamclaw, or an event with the Muckshoots, or anything else. So if we could take some of that and spread it out to the east, I think that that would be a real service. Underused area there on Highway 18.
That's a good comment. Thank you.
Will that be lit up? The reason why I asked is because I went to a concert, and they routed us that way, because there was a really, there was a head-on collision on Highway 164, and they routed us out there, and everyone was lost.
So it, so that would depend upon the standards for the agency wherever that corridor is located. So a portion of content for the corridor would be within King County, so it would be whatever King County would allow to be constructed. If it was within the City of Auburn, it would be meeting the City of Auburn standards, which include street lighting for any of those, as far as King County, it depends upon how they view the roadway.
Just a comment on concept four. The, the salmon, the salmon coming off, salmon-colored line coming off of Highway 18, and then cutting through the, that's a lot of farmland through there, as you know, as you know.
And if you look at, under the challenges, that's one of the potential challenges of option four, is the impacts to heritage sites and to the farmland.
King County will have some feedback on this. I probably didn't mention this, the open house is tomorrow night. The first one is at the Muckshoot Elder Center, that's tomorrow night, and then on February 7th, we'll be meeting at the Chinook, or Chinook Elementary?
Yeah.
Elementary school, yeah, and that, which is right by one of these alignments, so I think that's, I think that would be really useful. And then, just to go over the timeline, here we are in early 2019 with public outreach. We'll probably have more public outreach as we have more information, more details to share, feedback from the community. And then we can, if we get too close to deciding on a preferred solution, then we would start environmental documentation and design, and how we would do that by the end of the year. And then the state has Connecting Washington funds that are, can be obligated between now and 2021. And our team will be continuing to work together, leading staff from the city.
Do you, do you have an estimated schedule from 2020 on?
No. It depends on what the solution is. For example, if it's.
No, okay. I understand that, sure.
They really vary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, going on to three, item, Roman numeral four, Minus Services Discussion Items. We have none tonight, unless the council wants to bring one up, we can discuss it under our matrix. Is that agreeable with folks? All right. Other discussion items? None? I don't know of any. Business? Yes.
Deputy Mayor, I'd like to request about a 10-minute executive session, under the provisions of RGW 4231-10/1/1, to discuss potential litigation.
Okay.
See that after, after the matrix discussion?
Say what?
After the matrix discussion is fine.
Oh, after the matrix, right, okay, sounds good. We'll go into the matrix. Seven. Yes, I'm sorry, Larry.
No. I would like to suggest our council take a look, doing, I kind of heard this during our discussion, maybe a comparative look at our parks budget, and maybe compare it with expenditures as a percentage of budget for our city versus comparative centripudio-sound cities of our size, just to take a look at that, to see if we are, you know, under-delivering or outsized or something like that. Does that sound like a subject matter that we can tackle?
Francis?
Yes, yes, sounds good.
Larry, I want Larry to restate his proposed matrix item, to have a discussion about a comparative analysis of Auburn's budget related to parks and recreation relative to comparable cities in our area.
Is that the 2019 and 2020 budget?
Yeah, I think that.
And that would be covering revenue and expenditures, right?
Absolutely. And, you know, I just have to say that I'm always bragging about the parks and rec programs that we have in our city, so I'm not presupposing any judgment here, it's just, I think we need to understand where we are, and-
One second, Largo. So, we would want to bring that up in the future then. What, when do you, would you like to see this, and when could it be done?
So, that's, we'll take it back to the directors, and the directors and I will discuss how long it will take for that information to become available, based on workloads, how long it takes to get that information from surrounding cities. So, we should have a better idea for you at next week's, or at the next study session.
Cool.
Okay.
Thank you, Largo.
In relation to that same topic, I'd like to see some historical data, as to, not necessarily what other cities have been spending, but how much we spent, say, for the last five years, and I'd like to have included in that, the parks mitigation money that we spent, for the park mitigation, or the park-
So, there's park impact fees?
The park impact fees, and how much we've been accruing, and where that money's been going.
Shelley?
The money goes into the impact fee fund, and there's probably about $5 million, maybe 5.3 in there right now, for park impact fees, and we do have some budgeted for 2019 and 2020 for some of our parks capital programs.
Yeah, so it'd be nice to see how much we're accruing this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
For how many years you'd think?
Whatever the staff recommends to give us a flavor of what we need-
As far as the historical-
Three, could be five, whatever you think.
Okay. You mentioned five years.
Yeah.
Shelley, you said?
John, go ahead, John. Under Finance, purple, I'd like to add the topic Revenue Options.
So-
That's, looks purple to me.
So, can I, I think one of the things that you all said is that it's not going to be as a special focus area topic, it will be a general topic that will be brought back, so-
Indeed, but I want it on our, so that we do talk about it in this group.
Oh, you're going to talk about it.
So, let's put it on the matrix.
Okay, now, give us that topic again, please.
Revenue options.
Oh, Revenue Options, okay.
We keep it on our matrix, you can list it as purple, or you can list it anywhere you want, but I just want to see it-
Is that a consensus on everybody?
Yeah.
Finance. What I'm, what I'm doing, council, is, it's been brought to my attention by the clerk, that oftentimes, there's a lot of discussion going across the table, and they don't pick up all of the salient points. And so, I have a form that they have given me, and we've worked together on the form. And so, I'm trying to succinctly lay out what you all, what we all want, so that they can come back, and with the information, so it's clear when it comes back to us, and it's clear for them to understand what we want. So, that's why I've been asking. Okay, John, the Revenue Options is planning ahead, right? Planning ahead. Okay. Anything else on what John has on Revenue Options? It's, we've reached a consensus, we want to see it, and we want it because we want to plan ahead on our revenue stream. Okay, anything else, council?
Just a point. When it's on the matrix, it doesn't get taken off the matrix until we've dealt with it.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's always the way it's been, John, to my understanding, anyway. Anything else?
I'd like to study executive session. Yes, Mayor?
I just, let's see, directors, or David specifically, information or innovation and technology is on the topic, but didn't we need clarity on what you wanted, or what council wanted? There was, so it's on the agenda for February 25th, Innovation and Technology, but there's no specifics behind what that is, and so, it's a little challenging for our directors to come up with what you want to hear about.
So, that was you, Largo, right?
No, I think it was John.
John, okay, John, can you be more specific?
I believe our conversation was about a general update, since we've had a change in directors, and we have old programs that are probably being modified. So, just a general update, what, kind of a, how goes it, and where you at? And where you're going?
Where you're going.
Okay, is that a consensus? Yeah, well, it's got to be, it's already on here. So, it's a general update by the new director. And, you know, and you could even, you could even probably give a visionary picture.
Yeah, but if you do handout-
We do the vision.
That's the vision.
Oh, but he could recommend-
Help guide us, you bet.
Yeah.
That's what I was meaning, John.
Are there any other, there and staff, are there any other items that need more specificity in it, in them? Yes, Largo?
Yes, I need a date for the Auburn Valley Arts Group, so that we can, we have out-of-town people who are coming from California, and so, we need to have a date.
So, we need to know exactly what you're looking for from the Auburn Valley Creative Arts. What exactly is it that you want them to present?
They're going to present an overview of the kind of arts that they are supporting, their calendar of events, some of the local businesses that have donated, and just tell a little bit about their program and the direction that they're heading.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Hearing none, we will go into executive session before we adjourn. Unless someone wants a five-minute break before we do that?
No, go ahead.
No, okay, all right.